Thirty-two P M. Is there a motion regarding the disposition of the grievance of Ms. Moreta Davis?
Yes, Mr. President. I move that the board uphold the decision at level three, but we ask the superintendent to work with Ms. Davis.
Do you have discussion on the motion? Can I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, a motion on table by Mrs. Ambrose, second by trustee Getwood. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Dr. Porter.
Thank you, President Barti. At this time, we will hear, I have our public hearing for School Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas. The first, um, so I'll turn it over at this time to Mrs. Davis. I want to thank Mrs. Davis, along with Mrs. Jeans, for working to have our rating at such a high level. Uh, it's been very, very difficult the last eighteen months. But I think they do a very good job in the business office, as well as we all do at each campus and the district and the different areas. So everyone is very, very cognizant of what we need to do in order to ensure that our ratings are good, our fund balance is healthy, and to make sure that everyone receives a check on the fifteenth and thirtieth of each month. So, Ms. Davis.
Thank you, Dr. Porter. Um, greetings, board members and executive team and Port Arthur. Um, just a little, um, history on the school finance report. Um, the finance report card is the state's school financial accountability rating system. Um, as Dr. Porter restated, the first stands for Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas. And this system ensures that Texas public schools are held accountable for the quality of their financial management practice, practices, and that they improve these practices if, if needed. And the system was also designed to encourage Texas public schools to better manage their financial resources to provide the maximum allocation possible for instruction purposes. So we see that our rating this year and the year that this report covers is, uh, school year twenty nineteen twenty. Um, for those of you who don't know, the rating is a year behind. But, and for the nineteen twenty school year, the district received an above, uh, standard achievement, which we consider to be a B-plus, and we, uh, earned a score of an eighty-eight. So when we look at the different indicators, if you flip over to, um, it looks like page three or four maybe, um, you see that the district was rated on about twenty different indicators. Um, the score was either a yes or no on a few other answers. We have a maximum of a ten on a couple of the answers, and, um, a couple of them had, um, a max of five. So I'll kind of point those out as we go through it. So if we just look at indicator number one, the question is, was the complete annual financial report submitted to T A timely? And so, yes, and so the district received, uh, a score of yes, because we did, uh, present the report timely. The second indicator was, there an unmodified opinion in the annual financial report as a whole? The answer is yes, the district did receive an unmodified opinion. And the unmodified opinion means, uh, free of material mistakes and, um, free of, uh, weaknesses and internal controls. Uh, indicator number three, was the school district in compliance with the payment terms of all debt agreements at fiscal year end? Meaning, did we make our bond payments on time? The answer is yes. Did the school district make timely payments to our T R S or, uh, any other governmental agency? The answer for that is yes. Was the average changed in unassigned or, uh, assigned fund balance over the three years less than a twenty-five percent decrease? And this was a new indicator. We had approximately six new indicators added for this year. And the district, uh, if you see the score, is ceiling passed. Was the number of days of cash on hand sufficient to cover operating expenses? And the district received a, a score of ten, because we did have a hundred and twenty-three point four-one days. Was the measure of current assets to current liabilities ratio for the school district sufficient to cover short-term debt? The district received a score of ten, which is the high score. That the school district's general fund revenues equal or exceed expenses? Uh, we received a score of ten. That the school district averaged less than a ten percent variance when comparing budgeted revenues to actual revenues for the last three years? The district received a score of ten. Was the ratio of long-term liabilities to total assets for the school district sufficient to support long-term solvency? The district's score was a point nine oh eight five. And, um, the desired result was between a point nine to a one, uh, one point zero ratio. Our score was a two of ten. Was the debt per one hundred dollar of assessed property value ratio sufficient to support future debt repayments? District's score was eight. Was the school district's administrative cost ratio equal to or less than the threshold ratio? The district received a score of eight. Did the school district not have a fifteen percent decline in staff ratio over three years? District received a score of ten. Uh, number fifteen was also a new indicator. Was the school district's ADA within the allotted range of the district's biannual pupil, uh, projection submitted to T A? Our score was a five of five. That the comparison of P E M's data, uh, submitted matched what was in our annual financial report? And, um, we had zero percent, uh, differences, so that ceiling was passed. Did our external independent auditor report that our financial report was free of any material weaknesses and internal controls over financial reporting and compliance? And the answer was yes, so that ceiling was passed. Did the external, internal auditor report that the financial reports were free of any instances of material non-compliance? Um, we scored a, uh, ten, because that answer was yes, there was no material non-compliance reported. Did the school district post the required financial information on its website? This is also a new indicator. And so that answer is, uh, was yes, so we received a high score of five. The way they rated that indicator was either a yes, and you got five points, or it was a no, and you got zero points. Did the school board members discuss the district's property values at a board meeting within a hundred and twenty days before the district adopted its budget? The answer to that was yes, and that ceiling was passed. So if you turn over to the next page, this page show, gives a recap of any payments made on behalf of the superintendent or the board are made to them. And it covers travel, uh, any kind, any expenses for travel. That includes your meals, your lodging, your transportation, any fuel. And then the other category that covers, uh, payments for, uh, cellphone expenses, um, any registration fees. On the next page, it, um, is where we were required to, uh, provide any disclosures. And the first section, uh, is about outside compensation and our fees received by the superintendent. We had zero to disclose. The next section, the middle section, was any gifts received by our board members, and that's from our, board members are superintendent, that's from any vendor, vendors. We had zero to disclose. And the third section, the last section, is any business transactions between the school district and board members. And we had nothing to disclose. The last page is the outside of the cover shows the P A I S D facts for the twenty twenty, twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year. Uh, we give the number of students, the number of employees, our total budget, and our taxable and appraised values for P A I S D.
Thank you, Dr. Porter.
Are there any questions by the trustees at this time? Mrs. Ambrose?
Thank you, Ms. Davis, um, for your report. I just have, uh, one question about the, um, indicator description and the scores. Now, I see where some of them had, uh, yes scores and then number scores. But specifically, the ones where ceiling passed, would that normally be, um, a letter, a number score or a yes or no? How would that work?
Well, the way, um, and Ms. Jeans, correct me if I'm wrong, but the way T A, uh, values it is if you, you either pass or fail. So when the ceiling passed, that means we, we passed it. So there is not a numerical score assigned to that indicator.
Okay, so this is how it would always be?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So may I, so one thing is trying to show you, they're penalizing you if you fail, because they take away, and I don't know if you noticed, Ms. Davis mentioned on one of them, that if you failed, they took away five points. If you passed, you were okay, but they will take away from you, and you will not be able to even get into the, the category of, of, of being a, a B or a A. You would fall to maybe a C or a D. So those are kind of critical indicators that they added.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, at this time, we will move on to public, uh, comments. If there is one, would have public comments at this time? Is there anyone who would like to have public comments at this time? If not, we will adjourn this, this portion of the meeting, and we will go down to public participation. There is none. At this time, we have a staff report by Dr. Porter. I'm asking trustees that you hold your questions to the end of the reports. Thank you.
Thank you, President Barti, board members. It has been an interesting, uh, couple of days, obviously. We have completed the first nine-week period, and we are happy about that. Our students, the report cards were on, uh, our parents could retrieve them from the computer. So we're to that point, we did not send out report cards for the first time. And it's working well, to my knowledge, because we didn't receive any calls saying they didn't receive the report card, so that's a good thing. So we are happy that we've completed the first nine weeks, and we're in the fourth week of the second nine-week period. So that is a good thing. On yesterday, we did have some inclement weather. Um, tornadoes were in the area, and I think we did a good job at planning. And when I say planning, our students did a good job at following the instructions of their teachers and administration at the campuses. Uh, there were some students that were a little, um, upset, and also some staff members that were a little upset. We have come through Rita, we've come through Ike, we've come through Umberto, we've come through Harvey, we've dealt with, um, COVID, and now tornadoes. And that is something that we didn't expect. We were at school, and all of a sudden tornadoes started coming our way. And the phones started ringing, um, the alarm system started going off. And it did cause a bit of a concern, I'll say. So, uh, there were some staff members and students that were concerned. And I'll say, I think with all of the stress that we've dealt with, sometimes it gets to be a bit much. And, and, but I think the principals, along with teachers and the students, did a great job. They really did, for something that was unknown and not planned. So we were happy with how things went, thank, uh, we thank God that it went over really quickly. It came from the Gulf, and it went over really quickly, so we were happy about that. And everyone was okay, and, um, we saw people and students were smiling, and today was a beautiful day. And that was a good thing. So we've, we've gone through that beautiful day today, the sun shining, and it was cool weather, and our students and staff are okay. The next thing I will talk about is, on last Friday, we did send out a letter to our community, our parents and our students. And the letter indicated something that was not new. It was a reminder, it was a reminder that we would enforce certain penalties if students fought on the campuses. Now, there have been questions about, um, what would be the procedures? There have been questions as to, uh, why we would incarcerate children? And the answer to that is, that is not our intent. We are a public school system, and our intent is for every student to be able to come to school, want to come to school, learn, and be safe. No student should have to come to school in fear. No parent brings their children to school to be bullied, to have to fight, and to be a part of disruption throughout the day. So I will say that the majority of our children are wonderful. They're great, they come to us, they come to us to learn, they're, they're funny, they're, they're innocent, and they want to do what's right. However, we do have a small percentage of students that appear to be incorrigible. And those kids that come every day deserve to be protected. Now, I think, and I'll say this, um, Mrs. Lot did a wonderful job expressing and to the media what our intent was and what would be the process. And she did explain the incident, each incident, and we did put in there may be, may. We didn't say they would definitely be. And she explained that the incident would be, every incident would be investigated to determine the facts of what happened from the persons who broke up the fight, witnesses, school administrators, and the victims before a determination is made. But we have to do something. And I'm not going to say that in our district, we've had fights, fights every day, every day. No, we have not. But we need to put a stop to what may occur. And we have seen, um, a upsurge in fighting, especially about a month ago. And you can remember when TikTok was out there with their antics, and we had to deal with fights due to TikToks. But, and then we, we had a lull, and for about two weeks, it was calm. And then there was an isolated incident that occurred. And it shouldn't have occurred. It should not. And it was serious. And the student that it happened to, the students that it, that were involved, it shouldn't have happened. The student shouldn't have been hurt, but he was. So each, even if it's just one incident, is one too many if it's your child, if it's your brother, your sister, your grandchild, or whatever. One incident that causes harm to any of our children is one too many, especially if we can put a stop to it. Now, we've asked parents over and over again to help us. As I stated earlier, it is not our intent to press charges on students. It is, it is our intent to graduate one hundred percent of our children in the Port Arthur Independent School District. However, if parents do not help us to do that, the, the chore, the, the job becomes greater. Some parents encourage their children to fight, and that is wrong. And yes, we understand that if someone comes up to you and they hit you or they do something, that you have to defend yourself. We're not saying, don't defend yourself. But to, to attack someone without any reason, without trying to work it out first, is wrong. And for parents to uphold that is incorrigible. I'm going to say, we love our children, we have eight thousand children, and we love them, but we're not their parents. And we never will be. Parents need to take care of their own children. They need to raise them, they need to teach them right from wrong, they need to clothe them, they need to feed them, they need to see that they go to bed on time, they need to help them with their homework, they need to discipline them. If they do that, then we can do our jobs as educators. We cannot do our jobs if parents are not in partnership with us. So, no, that is not our intent to place anyone in jail. But if, but some of our kids are really out of control. And if that's a way where we can protect the majority of our students and our staff, that is what we're going to do. We want parents to help us, we want students to help us. However, if we're pushed up against a wall where we don't have any other alternative, and yes, parents will say there are alternatives, and yes, there are, and we're willing to listen, and we're willing to come up with alternatives. However, we will not do it alone. We will do it with the community, and we will do it with parents. Once again, we appreciate and we respect all of our children, but they're not ours, they're yours. You're the parent, and you need to raise your own children. It is not for us to raise a child. It is for us to partner with the family and help that child to be a success academically. And yes, we want to redirect, we want to love, we want to high-five, we want to do all of those positive things. But we need help from this community, and we need help from parents. So one way or the other, we're going to protect those students that come to school every day, that want to learn, that have a, have an urge and a, a quest and a thirst to learn math, science, fine arts, athletics, anything that we offer, without interruption and without being fearful to come into the school. It makes no sense, and we will stand on this until we, we, we can't stand anymore. So if parents have questions, please don't hesitate. We are, we're planning, Mrs. Lot and I have talked, we're planning on having, um, somewhat of a forum, I'll, I'll say. And we will talk about that later on and tell you the, um, the specifics of it. However, we're moving forward with what we have stated, and we stand by what we state. We're not going to allow students to just beat up, torture, and bully our students in the Port Arthur Independent School District. And it's not about any other district, it doesn't matter what other districts are doing. We are Port Arthur, we live in Port Arthur, and we will protect our children, one way or the other. The next, the next thing, um, we talked about the letter. And there's something, as we had something, uh, someone, uh, came up with a, a suggestion, and I'm going to turn this over to Mrs. Lot, and we are open for suggestions. There was, Mr. Lofton did call, trustee Lofton, Ms. Ambrose mentioned it. There's something where dads, this was happening in Shreveport, Louisiana, Shreveport, Louisiana, and a group of dads went into the school to try and make a difference. Now, let me say this, as I told Mr. Lofton, we can't ask dads to just come on into the schools and do whatever you want to do. That's not what we're going to do. Because we're in COVID, we have to look at background checks, we have to train our fathers how to interact with our students, we have to train them on diversity, we have to train them on what they can and cannot do. So it's a process. But we would love for dads or, or, or men that are father figures to come into our schools to show our children that there are respectable men in the community that know what to do and appreciate our youth. But there is a process to that. We can't just open our doors, because our doors are closed now to COVID. But there is a process, and we're going to look at the process, and we want help, we're asking for help. But there is a process. Mrs. Lot?
Thank you, Dr. Porter. Mr. Boone, he's going to put up the proposal that I've been working on, and it is a work in progress. So what I propose is that we have a organization called POPS Patrol, and it's an acronym for presently available to redirect, often encourage and listen to students.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm having trouble hearing this.
Mr. Boone, can you turn her, her mic up, microphone up just a little bit?
Okay, um, I have, this proposal is a work in process for an organization called POPS Patrol, and PATROL is a acronym for presently available to redirect, often encourage and listen to students. The idea came from the Dads on Duty Group from Shreveport, and I saw video clips of news stories about it online. Um, I did a little research, anybody can Google Dads on Duty, uh, you may add Louisiana, and every news story and article about the group will come up. It explains that the group of fathers decided to step up and support their school system after there were twenty-three students who were arrested over the course of three days for fighting in one of the high schools in Shreveport. So the police, the campus security, and the administrators had been unsuccessful at curbing the violence. So the, the group consists of forty fathers who now regularly line the hallways of that particular school in shifts, and they greet the students as they come in in the morning, and they encourage them to get to class. Some of the videos show, uh, footage of the fathers in the hallways. They may give the kids a fist bump, a high-five, encourage them to hurry and get to class, have a good day, things of that nature. And just the presence of having the dads flood the hallways, there have been no more instances of violence at that particular campus once the dads stepped in. The students, there were comments from students, and they even appreciate what they feel are the corny jokes of the dads. They feel like sometimes the dads can just give them a look, and it'll have some of them to straighten up their behavior just with a look. But the students have said that they feel safer with the male presence and just the men being visible. And they have no law enforcement, um, education or experience, they're not counselors, but it's just the presence and the words of encouragement, and their humor reassures the kids and makes the kids feel safer. So there are a few pros and there are a few cons, but we developed some goals for our POPS Patrol. The first one being to support staff by establishing consistent and additional supervision in the hallways and cafeterias and also the common areas of the campuses, to encourage a decrease in disruptive behaviors that are negatively impacting learning, and to boost the campus morale, increase student attendance and self-esteem. When students feel safer, they come to school more, because some students actually skip school when they're being bullied or do not feel safe at school. So this is a way to increase attendance. We, the duties of the club is to be determined, but the suggested duties are to greet the students in the morning, perhaps sit with them at breakfast, have a conversation, get to know the students, develop relationships with them, greet them and encourage them during transitions, um, wish them well as they leave school in the afternoon. Because we don't know what mind frame the child is coming to school with. I've seen kids who've gotten out of vehicles upset because they got into it with the parent on the ride home from school. Everybody doesn't wake up on the right side of the bed, and we don't know what they're going home to at the end of the day either. So those words of encouragement from the dads will be an added support to the students. We want them to offer motivation and verbal encouragement and support. The only physical contact would perhaps be fist bumps with permission, that's what we're recommending. Um, we don't want to get into the hugging or too much of physical contact with the students. The members of the club will have to be trained, like Dr. Porter said, so that they are knowledgeable of our student population and the diversity of the district, and to know how to address different situations that may arise during the course of a school day. We will have criteria for the membership. restricted to male volunteers ages 35 and older who can pass a criminal background check and also be fully vaccinated against COVID. The mask mandate will apply when inside and they will be recommended if the dads are outside of the campuses. Uh, we want the members to uphold our district guidelines and codes of conduct and remain casually professional at all times during the student interactions. I created a Google form and, uh, the link to the Google form is on this proposal where the people who want to volunteer to be a part of the organization can give their contact information and we gave them options of what their availability may be to volunteer. Like if you want to do the morning shift or midday shift or afternoon shift and what is your preference in terms of, do you want to volunteer at an elementary campus, a middle, a middle school campus or a high school campus? Um, and then what your availability is. Some people may shift work four days a week so they have that fifth day that they can volunteer consistently one day a week. Some people may work three days on and three days off, so it may vary. So, we ask for that type of information so we can try to put together a schedule, um, for the people who fit the criteria and become members of the organization. We are projecting that the benefits would be to decrease the number of violent physical or verbal altercations across our campuses and also increase student attendance and improve their morale. We may face some challenges by, uh, such as safely patrolling campuses during COVID. Some may be anti-vax and that may be a factor in whether or not they can participate in the organization. Um, the ability to keep your mask on when you're inside, um, especially when you're talking to students. Sometimes we want to pull it down to say something. We want to remain safe at all times because we don't want a parent to say that a member of the organization gave their child COVID because then that would be another problem. We're trying to resolve issues and not create new ones. We want the, the dads group to be able to safely and verbally diffuse situations. They may escalate. However, what would the group members do if a fight actually occurs? Because our district police department, campus security and district employees are the only ones who can intervene and break up fights. So, we, we definitely don't want any of the members of this volunteer organization to break up any fights or have any type of, uh, physical ac- uh, activity other than the fist bump with the kids. Um, I, I stated our district vision, mission and beliefs, but I also added a vision of the POPS on Patrol will assist PAISD by cons- by being consistently and physically present to support school staff in motivating students before school and during parents' periods of transition. Um, in addition to our district mission, the POPS on Patrol's mission would be to help create a climate of calm across campuses that will encourage students to be present, to work hard and to be able to control their emotions and cooperate with not only just adults, but with each other, with their peers. And the beliefs of our district, um, I feel align with what the beliefs of the group should be. So, I highlighted some of those points in red. There is a nationwide group called Watch Dogs and DOGS is an acronym for Dads of Great Students. Um, I gave the way, the website for that particular organization as well so we can look to that particular organization as well as the Dads on Duty for ideas on how we can implement this program here in Port Arthur or a similar program, not theirs, but our own.
So, Ms. Lot is, uh, looking at some things and we'll be talking about it with other, um, employees and trying to get our head around it. Okay, okay, so, okay. So, we're, we're just looking at ways and getting ideas and then we may even bring in, um, just thinking about it, we may bring in some of our parents to talk with us about things that we can do along this, this line as well because we do want their input.
Okay, I have a few questions and I'm gonna go in there, I think, Mr. Getwood, you have a question?
Yes, um, first and foremost, thank you, Dr. Porter, for that, um, clarification. And, um, just something in particular with this, um, initiative and I think this is really great and you've been doing an amazing job so far. I think another good asset that you can utilize, um, in helping you complete this task is get in contact with, um, Ms. LaSonia Baptiste. Actually, when I was a student at Lincoln Middle School, they had, um, an organization called the Dads Club in which my grandpa served as the president. And, um, it was an organization very similar to this and personally, I can attest and say that it did work. It was really, uh, really, really beneficial to the students. Um, of course, it was, they follow the same guidelines here. If there was a physical altercation, they didn't get involved into after the fact for mentoring purposes and counseling purposes. But just as you said, we have so many students who, um, are coming to school and we don't know what's going on at home and we don't know what they're going, what they're going through or going to. Um, so, you know, having a program like this would very, would very much be beneficial. Um, and I'm really glad to see that this is going to be a district-wide initiative and not just at that campus. That's something I've been talking to my grandpa about and Ms. Baptiste about when they first started the Dads Club. They would also have meetings on different campuses where they would pull some of the gentlemen in who came early and they would do a Dads Club meeting and they would have a guest speaker come to Lincoln. They would give out donuts and, um, some orange juice to get the day started and get the kids motivated and send them on to class for advisory period. So, that would be another great resource as well. And another thing, um, that I would like to highlight, uh, which also be a plus to the initiative because bullying is something that is nationwide. But I will say that Tero Elementary, I did have a, um, very great visit there to their campus and they have an initiative as well that has really been stopping the prevention of bullying and it's called TAG, Tell a Grown Up. And it is, um, kind of like they have a documentation put in place, kind of like the, um, Crime Stoppers to where it's like an anonymous, um, anonymous, um, paper that you can fill out and either send to, directly to them or put into a box. And so, if you can get in contact with them as well, I have, um, the form and a PowerPoint in which they presented while I was there, um, to the students. And so, that's another good initiative as well and kudos to them for creating that. Yes, Ms. Floyd. And I have it on, on email, so I can email it to you as well.
All right. With, with that being said, uh, Mrs. Lot, are we looking to have a core group of dads to move around the campus, move around our campuses? Or are we looking at each campus to have their own dads club? We can go.
If we have enough dads to spread out across all campus, that would be the ideal goal.
Okay.
So, that, yeah, that's what I would think at every campus.
Okay, and then, and like I said, that's, that's a, a great idea uh, to get, to get dads involved in, in, um, into the district and have them come out. I've seen, I've seen the tape, I've seen the videos of different, uh, dads doing it. You know, I think they did a couple of years ago in Houston where all the dads lined up in the morning and the kids had to walk through a little tunnel with the dads and give them high five as they walked into their school, into their schools. And I think this would be a great deal for us to have here in, in, in our district. To move on to, um, just to go back up to what Doc was saying as far as the letter that came out. Um, yes, Doc, I've heard it all about the letter. Uh, it's something that, you know, uh, that parents are, are kind of upset about, but I, like I said, and I'll say it in, in, in here in front of everybody, I am a proponent of that letter and I'm gonna stand behind our superintendent when it comes to that letter and it comes to our discipline of our kids. We have to start holding our parents accountable for their, their kids' actions and then we also have to start teaching our kids accountability. I have a son that's three years old and, you know, he gets away with mom with not putting up the toys, but when he gets with me and I tell him to put up the toys, the toys get put up. And, uh, it's just being accountable, holding him accountable at three, at the age of three, to pick up his toys, he understands. If daddy's home, I have to pick up my toys and I have to do what daddy says to do. And, and that's where we're getting away from. We're letting our kids, uh, make decisions and we're an adult. So, we need to put it back in our parents' hands and let them understand that this is an entity, school district. We're here to educate, we're not here to babysit. We're not here to do anything else but educate your child. And at the end of the year, they walk away successful and go on to a college and get a degree. That's our whole plan in Port Arthur Independent School District. I don't, I understand what's going on in other districts, but we're gonna do what's best for the children of Port Arthur Independent School District. And I stand behind that letter to, to tip, to, to, from top to the bottom of it with Dr. Porter and our staff and everybody else. And I expect for our parents to get on board with that. In Houston I S D, they have a, a program and I'm gonna find out that program and I'm gonna let you look into it. But there's a program that my cousin is a part of, that was a part of before he moved, uh, schools. But they have a, on, on Thursday nights, they would have a program to teach parents how to be parents on Thursday nights in Houston I S D. And if we have to go that, to teach a parent how to be a parent so their child can be successful, I don't, I don't, I don't see a problem with us doing that, going the extra mile because we do, in P O, Port Arthur Independent School District, go the extra mile to help our kids be successful and succeed. So, uh, Doc, board, audience, I am here to tell you that I am 100% behind what Doc put together and sent to the parents and we're gonna continue to do what we have to do to make Port Arthur the best district in this region and to be a, a flagship for other people to follow along with what we're doing because we've been very successful in the choices that we make. That's all, and Ms. Ambrose.
Thank you, Ms. Lot. Excellent report, appreciate it, thank you for all that you do. I have to concur with Mr. Varty and his sentiments in that we should go forward and, and holding ourselves as well as our students and our parents accountable for their actions. So, thank you for your work. I want to go back to something Dr. Porter, uh, mentioned in his report, that our report cards are now, um, online. Going forward, is this the process that we're going to have from this point, pay for this report card?
Yes, yes, it is. Parents can access the report cards online, um, even through school and gym.
And, and that's what I was gonna ask you also. For, for example, if, if a parent, uh, does not have access to a desktop with the students, they obviously have their Chromebooks that we've given, they can access those through their Chromebooks to all?
Ms. Ambrose, they can access the report card from their phone. And I, I am, I am almost 100% positive that every parent or, let's say 98.5% of our parents have, have, have a phone.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so they can access from the phone, the Chrome, their child's Chromebook that we have provided for every student or their own personal computer.
Okay.
Or if they just want to come to the school and say, give me a report card, since they don't have anything, we'll give them a report card, but, yes.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you.
The children know how to access their report cards too.
Yes.
So, if, if the parent doesn't know how to log on to the home access center.
The child can, okay, thank you very much, thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, as we move on during the, uh, I'm sure some of you have seen or the clearing across the street.
Oh, yes.
This support center.
Yeah.
And it is looking very good. I mean, all the trees are just about gone. They're getting ready to, um, place those trees in a, in a machine and create mulch. So, we're excited about that. It's clear, it looks good and we're moving forward. Uh, for the newcomers center and for the support center, we do know that the prices have risen. You know, there, there, uh, it's hard to get workers, it's hard to get materials and prices have almost doubled. So, we are moving a little slower in construction. So, uh, we may be about a year out before we start building anything. For instance, the, um, the newcomers center and trying to figure out exactly where, we're still moving forward with the architectural drawings and we're gonna get that done. But with everything, we definitely want to stay in budget. But I'm, it's, I mean, it has, it has really risen. The prices have risen high highs. So, we're, we're taking our time and we'll wait a little while. The track at Lincoln is looking very, very good. Uh, the surface is down and now we're waiting, just, we're waiting for the city to, um, install the three-inch meter for the water because we have to have irrigation around, um, the track so it won't crack. And we, after that, then we'll paint the stripings on the track. So, it's looking really, really good right now and we're excited. We do have a draft of the Support Services Center and we're going back because of budget constraints and trying to figure out exactly what, what is needed. And we have approximately, well, we have 903 employees that have been vaccinated. We're still moving forward, encouraging, uh, that's about 68, that's 68% of our student, uh, our employees. Uh, out of 1326, 903 have been vaccinated.
Uh, Doc, um, I, I, I've listened here the last few days or so where they're, uh, they've approved vaccines for, uh, our younger children.
Yes.
Are any of our schools here in the district going to, uh, be, um, actually giving shots to children?
Well.
So, I heard that they're going to.
Well, we are not going to give the shots and we have not. The only thing we're doing is, um, we're testing for COVID, but we have not gotten into the business of actually vaccinating. I'm going to say no. I don't think we need to vacci- vaccinate children at this point. I think we're gonna leave that to the health department, to doctors. Now, if something comes along and we, we have an option too, and we have done that in our middle schools. We've allowed the, um, we, uh, Dr. Getwood, I think, has worked with the health department and with Gulf Coast and they've, they have a van that has come to our, to our schools and they've given out the vaccine, so we'll go that route. But as far, we can't even, we, um, we can't get that vaccine, but we will help and in a way we can to give our students the vaccine as needed. So, yes, we are, we are moving in that direction. Next on the agenda, uh, we have the 2021 Bilingual ESL Annual Program Evaluation. Dr. Carla Arbagon, this is her first time presenting as the Director of Bilingual Education and she has her staff with her, so I'm gonna ask her to come and introduce and tell us exactly all of the wonderful things that are happening in bilingual.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Carla Obregon and I am the new director of the Multilingual Migrant Program. I want to thank the board for giving me this opportunity. Uh, I would like to take this opportunity also to thank our P I S D Board of Trustees. I have seen each of you in the schools and just as I took this position, just to give you an example, I have seen Mr. Getwood, I have seen Dr. Porter and activities like Mr. Getwood, he participated in the Lamarr State College, uh, supporting the Hispanic Heritage Month. And Dr. Porter, just today, he sat over an hour and a half for, during the Hispanic Forum for Businesses. So, thank you. You are being visible and you are noted and your, uh, support to the community and to diversity, it is also appreciated. So, thank you to each one of you for everything that you are doing. Uh, today, uh, I will be, we will be presenting the Bilingual ESL Program Annual 2020-2021, uh, Report. But, uh, first, I would like to acknowledge that this report, I cannot take credit for it. I want to acknowledge Dr. Tatiana Morales Owen as the former, uh, by multilingual director. And I also want to acknowledge Dr. Melvin Getwood because he is my supervisor and he was also the supervisor of Dr. Morales that as well supported our, uh, our initiatives. So, um, we are going to start with the PowerPoint and hopefully you can see it on the, on the screen. So, here is our su- uh, superintendent. Uh, the agenda is the welcome, the staff presentation. Now, uh, we are all interdependent. We cannot do things on our own. So, this result has been because of the hard work of a team. Dr. Morales with his, with her team, uh, were the ones that, uh, came up with all these ideas, this initiative that we are going to share today. So, I'm going to ask my team to introduce themselves at this time.
Good evening, uh, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, my name is Roberto Diaz and I'm the Bilingual ESL Teacher Facilitator.
Hello, everyone, I'm Ricardo Celis, I'm the Parent Liaison.
Good evening, I'm Anna Barrientos. I am the newest member of the multilingual and migrant department and I'm here and I'm happy to be here, thank you very much.
So, our mission statement, the Multilingual and Migrant Department of the Port Arthur Independent School District is dedicated to pro-
is dedicated to providing English learners, migrant students and their families with opportunities to be academically successful. Our goal is to produce students competent in the English language through the implementation of a challenging curriculum and proven teaching strategies directed toward academic, social and emotional skills. We believe these skills to be the cornerstone for shaping students who will become lifelong learners and contributing members of the global society. So the programs, the Port Arthur Independent School District bilingual ESL programs are designed to provide a consistent and high quality education for culturally and linguistically diverse students. Our focal point is to align the district mission and the leadership statements with the rules of chapter eighty nine and the Commissioner's Rules eighty nine BP. So what instructional models do we have at the elementary level? We have the bilingual ESL education pre K through fifth. In pre K, our bilingual classes, we have sixty percent Spanish and forty percent in English. Kindergarten classes bilingual are Spanish fifty percent, English fifty percent. In first grade, Spanish twenty five percent, English seventy five percent. We do have an early exit model. What does that mean? That the student needs to be two for two years in the program before the student can exit or transition the multi bilingual or ESL program. So starting in second grade, with even though we have bilingual classes from pre K through fifth grade, starting in second grade, all the instruction is provided in English with the linguistic support of bilingual teachers. And and that is from second through fifth grade. Of course, that in middle school is all ESL and English as a second language, we have the content based and the pullout support for pre K and fifth as well. Now, secondary level, we have the English as a second language and we have a content based model where the students are served in general education classes by an ESL certified teacher. And we have the pullout model where the students are served by an ESL certified teacher during a specific class period. As you know, we have a shortage of teachers, especially in the bilingual and ESL area. So something that an initiative that Dr. Morales and the team started last year was that having ESL pullout teachers at every elementary campus where those pullout teachers are going to work with the students that do not have a bilingual or ESL teacher in the classroom. But they will be being pulled out from the regular to provide that the regular setting to receive the support that they need academically. So what is the transitional bilingual early exit model? As the general description is what I said before. A bilingual more program model in which students identify as English learners are served in both English and another language and are prepared to meet the reclassification criteria to be successful in English only instruction not earlier than two or later than five years after the student enrolls in schools. These decisions are not made lightly. This is has to go through a process and that's what we have LPA meetings at every campus level in order to make those determinations. The general description of the ESL content based program model is that in English, it is an English acquisition program that serves students identify as English learners through English instruction. So at this time, we have approximately twenty nine bilingual certified teachers, thirty eight ESL certified teachers, six bilingual and ESL pullout teachers. And I am going to have Mr. Diaz to come over and he's going to explain the the demographics.
All right, this is just a little bit of the demographics and how they look. So in our district, we have twenty six percent of the students are identified as English learners. The new or the latest legislature asks us to call them now emerging bilinguals. So that means that one in one of our four students in our district, it's an emerging bilingual. Now, if we look at ethnicity, we have a forty nine percent Hispanic. So that's half of our population. It's we're Hispanic.
Thank you. So now, as you know, we are we are before we used to have the PBMAS. That is the indicator that it is used as it was a way to measure the accountability for our English learners. Now the accountability changed and we have what is called now the RDA and we are measured in in, I'm sorry, I moved one slide over. Let me go back and I'm going to talk about the STAR results first. So the STAR results that we have, as you know, with COVID, the results and on the STAR scores went down. And as you can see on the graph, it in some cases went down significantly. And that didn't happen just with the subgroup of English learners. That happened with all subgroups and most of the students population. And this is not just Port Arthur. In Port Arthur, this is at the state level. So all the school districts are struggling because of COVID. A lot of students didn't have the same opportunity to have they have the of receive instruction face to face. So so in the ones that were online, not all of them were able to log in and participate, engage in the instruction, even though the district offered it. But there are a lot of variables to take into consideration because of COVID. So as I was saying before, now the bilingual and ESL, we are, we have nine indicators. But I'm just going to focus on the ones that we need to do some work, sorry. We need to do some work and that is on indicators nine. And that has to do with the graduation rate. Okay? We need and and when when we did a survey, we found out that there were different variables why the students were dropping out of the school. Some of those were that they some of them really needed to work, start working to support a family. They gave different responses on the survey. However, all those indicators, like I said before, we are not working separately. This is a collaborative effort with the leadership of Dr. Getwood. We started implementing a plan to address those indicators that we are in need to improve. So we are working toward that and since last year, we started, we have a plan in place. And hopefully, we will continue making progress this year. Now, as part of the multilingual program, we value parent participation. Like Dr. Paul Reed said before, without the parent's support, it is going to be harder to do the job. So that's why we have, I'm going to have Mr. Celis as the parent liaison to talk more about the parental engagement activities that they had performed last year.
Thank you, Dr. Obregon. As the multilingual and migrant department, there are some areas that we focus on to work with parents. Those areas are parent classes, informational parent meetings, participation on district wide workshops and community events, promote culture diversity and keep parents informed about district procedures, changes and important announcements. What you're seeing on the screen is just a list of all the activities that we had. About parent classes, we had ongoing classes, English classes for parents during the day. We had for beginners on Mondays and Wednesdays, one fifteen to three P M. For intermediate parents or intermediate level of English, we had the classes on Tuesdays and Thursdays. We also offer an even an evening class that was from six P M to eight thirty P M. In this particular class, we were including the reading and writing practice as well as history and civics. This is to help parents master their citizenship test. All those classes were going on during the whole school year. Besides that, we were offering a program that is called the Latino Family BRC Project. In this program, we read with with parents and we help them establish a reading routine at home. The books that we use for that program are bilingual. They read in English and Spanish. And the idea is for them to read with their kids. Where both of them are learning, the parents will practice their English, the students will will practice the Spanish. It's sad to to tell that some some students lose their language. So this program helps them keep their language and learn both of them, both parents and students learn. About informational meetings, well, we had several examples. We we partnered with some groups, the Southeast Texas Faith and Community Leaders was partnering with us. And we offer information about programs to help parents like the Edition Moratorium Program. They help us explain step by step how parents could apply to that program and what were the benefits. We also had meetings where we were talking about career paths. And and we had also meetings with the health department where we were given information about COVID, about the flu and all those diseases. Talking about participation on district wide workshops and community events. As a parent liaison, I participate in all Title One parent meetings. I translate to parents during those meetings. I also participated in the PTA meetings every month. We were invited today, as you heard, by the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, but we've been working with them the three years that they have done this this particular event. We also work with Lamar State College. The General Consulate of Mexico has come here to provide information to parents also. To promote culture and diversity, we have had events for the Hispanic Heritage Month, for the Black History Month and for the TED. And to keep parents informed, we've been using social media. I will say that the pandemic hit us all, right? But it also brought some opportunities. I've been using social media a lot with parents and it's been useful. Some of the some of the programs that we had, they have had like, I don't know, five thousand visits. Some of the meetings that we had were also on social media and they had thousands, one thousand visits. And maybe the the ones that had less had three, three hundred, three hundred visits. But it gives the opportunity to parents to watch the programs and get informed at their own times. And this is good. This is good for parents. And as you know, when the school and the parents work together, the the success of the student is granted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Celis. So now I'm going to have Mr. Roberto Diaz to go over the professional development offer and also the summer school program.
All right, so professional development, what you're gonna see, it's two or three or several slides of the professional development that we offer. I'm not gonna list it. But I just wanna say that, you know, because of we had COVID and we had to move from doing the trainings from in person to do them via Zoom online. It was a challenge. Now, as Mr. Celis said, it brought us some opportunities. Before we had to, you know, we would offer a training and we would do like several sessions and they would have to come. Well, now the campuses would want the specific dates and times for for the trainings. We was kind of like à la car training and we were able to offer that. So certain schools would say, well, can you do a whole day training because we want teachers to do it during their prep times? So we would accommodate to that. So I'm just, you know, happy to say that we we were able to to offer a lot of training, which is one of our main goals at the department, to provide technical assistance and training to the teachers. You wanna move on? It's just training, training. And the summer program, we are we are required by chapter eighty nine again to offer a summer program for students going to kindergarten and first grade. It has to be a hundred and twenty hours. So we we did comply with the program. We offer the program and those are just a few pictures of students and and teachers. We had to make up from from the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year because we owed some hours. So we did a summer program after school and then we did the summer program for this school year. But the students really enjoyed and we also had the ESL Academy very successful with with our ESL students. And oh, so we had a some reptiles coming to the campus. Gator country, yes. The students really, really liked that too.
Thank you. And so I just wanted to say in closing that, I mean, the support that you are providing to the programs, I mean, it makes a difference. And you can see the passion on the on the ones that are working for the programs. And we are just excited. I know that this is a program to present the the two thousand twenty one, twenty twenty one bilingual ESL annual program evaluation. But I want to take this opportunity to talk about the migrant program, just briefly to tell you that a lot of people made a mistake of thinking that migrant has to do with immigrant. There is a big difference of migrant program and immigrant. We have as migrant students, we have, it has to do with with the job that the parents do. It has to if the parent works in the fishing or agriculture, then they can be become eligible for migrant. So moving forward with migrant as well, because a lot of our ESL students or emerging bilingual students are also migrant students. These migrant students, we are going to also start with the same way that we have even in classes for parents. We are planning on doing a program that is, we wanted to call it Learning Together. And it's going to be for migrant parents and migrant students, English classes for especially for those newcomer students in the evenings. So that's something that is in the making and like I said, I am grateful for the opportunity that the board is providing me with. And I hope that I can just stand up to your expectations. Thank you and for giving me this opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Obregon. We have a question for Ms. Ambrose and Mr. Getwood.
Thank you very much. My fellow board members tell me sometimes I've reached my limit in questions, but I just have a question. So and then and obviously, our district is diverse. You've created a really, really knowledgeable program in the information that you presented us. But my one question is in terms of the migrant children and and the others. How effective do you think in terms of on a scale of one to ten, how effective is the program for those children?
Well, there is always room for improvement, but I wanted to tell you that before COVID, our our English English learners at elementary level, they we were almost at and I can show you in some of the content areas, we were almost a little bit below than the state. Okay, so we were the migrant. So we were, the migrant program, the, the bilingual ESL programs were, we were having some, of course, in some, writing has always been in a struggle, even for the state. The state has had almost 67% passing at the state level. So, and I always say, Dr. Porri, there is like some type of pattern. When the regular students do well, the bilingual ESL students tend to do better, but when the regular students do show difficulties, then the, we do much, much, much lower. I am not saying that we did excellent, I'm saying that under the circumstances, we did well, and there is another phenomenon that you need to consider, and it's also the refugees. We are receiving a lot of refugees and that comes from the camps, and, and these students, we, we focused a lot of the academics, but there is also a social emotional component that we need to take into consideration as well, because these kids have not just, they are not making the choice, they are just being brought here, and we have to work with them. So it is a challenge to work with bilingual and, and immigrant students, and, and so any, any little progress that they make, we celebrate. We have a lot of ways to improve, and, and I'm very excited that the, the board approved the, and the superintendent and the executive leadership, leadership team approved the position for Ms. Ana Barrientos, that is the migrant coordinator, because now we are going to have a person that is going to be assisting the migrant students. As a matter of fact, I don't know, we have 235, approximately, 32?
42.
Oh, 242 students, more, much more than Region 5. So we are growing in, in the migrant, and yes, we do have challenges. We have academic, academic challenges before COVID and after COVID. So we are well aware of those, and, but even the state are making changes. This is the constant with the state is change. So we have to be abreast of what the state is offering. Now with the new initiative, like, and grants like ESER, ESA, and all of those funds that are being available, which has to be created, and, and the challenge that we are facing is the challenge that other districts are facing, and, and a lot has to do, and I think that one of the most difficult is the shortage of teachers. Not just bilingual ESL, but just regular certified teachers is a shortage. So yes, ma'am, we are, we are aware of the challenges. I wish I could tell you we did great. No, we did not, I mean, as, as far as the STAR, as you can see, but we were doing okay, but of course, that there is always room for improvement. And, and, and the ultimate goal is to create success for the students, for the community. But I think that the way that we educate our parents, involve our parents, and prepare the, even teaching those English classes to parents, are going to allow them to participate more in the school and get involved and help the kids with the homework, and get more involved with the students. So we, you don't know, words are not enough to express the, the support that the board is giving and what you are giving us as far as promoting, helping us to just implement those initiatives, it, it's, it makes a difference. So hopefully, working together, we can get to that goal.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Getwood?
One of the things I wanna say first is congratulations, and please continue to keep up the amazing job. I know for a fact, just being in your presence and being around you, all you all doing an amazing job, and just keep that up. I think one of the things that I would like to touch on really quickly is, please keep up that social media presence. You all have a really great presence on social media, and it is making a difference. I think especially when it comes down to those opportunities for the parents as well to learn the English language and the students. I think it'll be a good initiative as well, if you all work together, do some videos or something to get it out there. The fires are great, but just to showcase, and even if you record some of the things you do on Zoom and post it up there, kind of like a mini-commercial, I think social media is one of the biggest ways to reach our parents, especially nowadays. We send letters home, we post everything, but if they can see it, it might say, well, hey, that's not what I thought it was, but I'm going next time, I'm going on the 22nd of this month. So keep up the great work. I would say keep using those Google Forms, it's gonna help you a lot with the breakdown and logistics of things, so just keep up the great work.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much for your time, okay?
Thank you, Ms. Overgon. And make sure that you get a copy of your events to Mrs. Davis, and she can get it to the board.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
President Barti, board member, that concludes our staff reports.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Porri, and your staff on the wonderful staff reports and division for the district. Minutes, considering if appropriate, approve minutes of the September 16, 2021 regular board meeting and the October 16, 2021 board workshop. Have a motion on floor by trustee Ambrose.
Second.
And a second by trustee Getwood, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda. The following items, which are of a routine and recurring nature, has been designated consent agenda items by, by the board president per policy, BE local. All of the items in the consent agenda will be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a trustee, in which event the item or items will be withdrawn immediately for individual consideration in its normal sequence after the items, not requiring a separate discussion has been acted upon.
President Barti, if we could, give me a minute to just clarify number four, five, and nine. Number four, we are asking for your approval for the MOU between Region 5 and the PAISD to facilitate management of the Grow Your Own program. Mrs. Londo, would you please briefly explain?
Thank you, Dr. Porri, to the board members. If this is approved, what we're looking to do with the Grow Your Own program is, we have identified paraprofessionals who are currently holding degrees but have not decided to reach out and try to get their teaching certificate, KELLY substitutes who are also degreed and could potentially get their certification, and then uncertified teachers. We've reached out to them, and they have expressed interest to us in joining this, in being a part of this program, which will allow them to work on their certification through Region 5. And in agree, in a, in an exchange or an agreement between us and them, they will work for us for three years after they have reached their certification, and we will help them to pay the approximately $5,100 for the Region 5 certification program. So they'll be studying with Region 5, and upon completion of their studies, they will take the cert, the required certification test. If the test, once the tests are passed, then they will work for our district for three years. Of course, the goal with doing this is to, to decrease the burden and the dependence that we have on hiring KELLY subs, because we don't have certified teachers.
Thank you, Ms. Londo. Number five, we have the job order contract for the chiller at Thomas Jefferson, the air condition has gone out, and we are moving expeditiously to get that rectified and get a new one. Number nine, we have 2,500 Chromebooks that we have ordered. Mr. Jackson, would you briefly explain how we are paying for that?
Good evening, board. What is going on is that FCC, who we use for our E-rate things, the USAC, they are, they have 7.17 million, billion dollars that they had out there for us to be able to utilize to purchase Chromebooks or laptops and, and also get services to our students in need. So we went ahead and filled out the application, and what they're gonna do is, we purchased these 2,500 so Chromebooks, and FCC would, would give us, would pay for the 1.26, 1 million 26,448 dollars in Chromebooks for us, so we wouldn't have, as a district, would not have to pay for them. It's something that, like I said, that the government did, and we are taking advantage of it.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Jackson. President Barti, that concludes our explanations.
Yes, I would like to call for a motion to accept consent agenda items 1 through 14 and 15 through 18.
So move.
Have a motion on table by trustee Ambrose, second by secretary Brown, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries.
President Barti, you have the list of employees of teachers we're asking for consideration.
Have a motion on, on the floor to, considering if appropriate, approve the employment of teachers by trustee Ambrose, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Getwood, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries.
President Barti, for the employment of comptroller, we're asking your approval for Mrs. Lynn Nguyen.
Yes, I would like, considering if appropriate, approve employment of comptroller, Mrs. Lynn Nguyen, can I get a motion? I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion on table by secretary Brown, and second by trustee Ambrose, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries. Information, Dr. Porri.
Average daily enrollment, 7,810, average daily attendance, 98.29%.
Thank you, Dr. Porri. We'd like to call the German this meeting at 7:54 p.m. We have a, we have a motion on table by trustee Ambrose, second by trustee Getwood, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, and have a good night.